I salute the flag of the state of New Mexico and this be a symbol of our friendship among united cultures.
And today, our invitation will be by Commissioner Crockett.
Heavenly Father, we come to you this morning, asking for your blessings and help as we are gathered together. We pray for guidance in the matters at hand and ask that you would clearly show us how to conduct our work. With a spirit of joy and enthusiasm, give us the desire to find ways to excel in our work. Help us to work together and encourage each other to excellence. We ask that we would be, would challenge each other to reach higher goals and to be the best we can be. We ask this in your name. Amen.
All right, with that, I will turn it over to our chairman.
So we'll see how this goes. Put your radio on and everything, so. We'll start our timed agenda. Any public comments?
It's a light crowd today.
Seeing them. That we have on the agenda, Household Hazardous Waste Collection Event, Public Works, Mr. Burns.
Good morning.
Morning, everybody.
Morning.
Morning.
All right, Chairman, Commissioners. We've put this on your agenda. This is an annual deal we bring to you every year, partnership we have with the city. I have with me this morning, Richard Aguilar, and he'll explain a few of the details of what they do with this thing.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Like Jason said, this is our annual, bi-annual event that we have with you guys. It's an ongoing project that seems to be working very well, still very well participated. We had 292 participants last year, which is one of our bigger ones that we've had. We're still collecting plenty of items that I'm surprised that we still have in these households. It's going to be October 26th this year, from 8:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. And opening it up for you guys for questions or comments or...
I don't have any. I just, this is a great event. And I'm glad that you guys continue to host this event. And it's always surprising to me how many people use this. And I get asked all the time, when's the next event going to be? Because I have computer equipment, I have this that I need to dispose of, so I just want to say thank you for the partnership.
No problem. That's what we're here for. Make sure everything goes well.
Do you want to just reiterate the dates in time again?
October 26th, 8:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. At the beach parking lot. We also taking tires again and working with you guys again at the landfill. Ran into a little issue last time, but we're able to go get through that, so.
So you're taking tires at this event?
We take tires at every event.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, and there was a little miscommunication last time, but it got cleared up and we were able to, it was no problem after first hour.
And I know, because I just got asked on that, if that, last week, when's the next tire pickup? So what, last time, it was a truckload or what?
Basically, if you're a resident, you can bring everything that's in your household if you want. Anything that's under your sink that you're no longer using, cleaners.
They were talking more tires.
Yeah, we'll take, you know, a household usually has two or three tires at home typically.
Not truckloads.
Not truckloads, but we have...
The guy that asked me happened to be a farmer.
Yeah.
Walter shot a big deal back then, so. Yeah, farmers tend to have a few.
Farmers tend to have the bigger tires, but yeah, and they have plenty of them. We'll take them.
Okay.
If they have more than a truckload, have them call us individually and we'll, we'll make arrangements to come get them or get them out at the landfill so they don't end up on the side of the road somewhere in Commissioner Carlson's district.
May regret off. That's right. There, there's two tires just laying on the side of Thompson Road, just stacked there. I mean, I don't know. Somebody got out, they didn't just throw them out, they stacked them. And they just left it on the side of the road. Somebody might need them.
You know, typically, we don't litter.
Can't wait for them to die.
Typically, we don't refuse the tires, because if we don't take them, we're going to find them in the river, we're going to find them out in the desert. And you know, once those things catch on fire, they don't, you can't put them out, so. So we'd rather collect them, get them to you guys over at the landfill and let you guys do what you need to do, shred them or bail them or whatever you guys do now. I, I just figure it's better for the environment that we, we get them in one spot and then find them all over the place, so.
It might be of you and your offer, instead of having them call us, maybe we have a tire in Otis, because it's, seems to be where most of the farmers with tires seem to be, so.
Right.
Tire day.
Yeah, we could sure do that at the loving collection station for a day.
How, how does this event work? Do you set up a roll-off or something at the beach and everybody shows up there with it? Do you go around town? How does it, can you...
They, they show up to the beach event and we have usually an area where they just drop off the tires and then we have the grappler pick them up and then take them out to the landfill.
What about hazardous waste? What about...
We have a line, yeah, it's, it's kind of like a stationed line. You line up, we, we sign you in and then you drive up to the contractor and they unload it for you and everything. You don't even have to get out of your car.
Oh, wow. Okay.
Take some stuff. It's really cool.
Yeah, I'm in. Find something. Matter of fact, I was reading this list going, I didn't know you weren't supposed to throw stuff away just regularly, so. So.
I thought you ever did, but it's good to know.
I didn't do, I didn't, I didn't take anything that don't like this.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the Household Hazardous Waste Collection Event. And the expense will come out of the environmental fund and it'll be approximately $12,500.
A second.
We have a motion in a second. If there's no further discussion, please call for the vote.
Crockett?
Yes.
McCutcheon?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time so much. Appreciate it. Jason, thank you.
You guys have a great day.
You too.
Okay, so we'll move to the trailing agenda. Look to review and approve the commission meetings from September, commission meeting minutes from September 3rd.
Any, any questions, concerns, or changes?
No, sir.
No? Saying none. I look for a motion to approve the commission meeting minutes for September 3rd, 2019.
So moved. Second.
Have a motion in a second. Please call for the vote.
Crockett?
Yes.
McCutcheon?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Next item is the expense approval report for August 2019.
Anything anyone needs to pull or discuss?
No, sir.
Commissioner? No? With that, we'll look for a motion to approve the expense approval report for August 2019.
Still moved, Mr. Chairman.
Have a motion?
Second.
And we have a second. Please call for the vote.
Crockett?
Yes.
McCutcheon?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Next item is discussion and direction from the Commissioners on changing and signing procedures for resolutions. I think after the, the last Commissioner meeting, Commissioner Henry had made a suggestion about getting all the signatures on a resolution. And so, we're, we're looking for guidance and direction. It's, we, we checked with several other counties that do multiple signatures. Some do it, once a resolution has been discussed and, and gone to vote, then that resolution is passed around to each of the Commissioners. They sign and indicate their vote on their... That approach just adds a bit more to the Commissioners' meeting, timelines, just the logistics of making that happen. The other option is continue doing what we've been doing, having the Chairman sign the resolutions and the vote indicated in the minutes. And another option would be to record the vote during the meeting and then get the Commissioners after the meeting and have everyone sign the resolutions and indicate their vote. And we could have a copy presented as, so that help you remember how you vote on each of those. You probably already do. So that was what we were trying to do. I think the question came up specifically related to a support resolution in support of an activity that was going on statewide. So the question is, was it simply for that notice of support? Or is that something the Commissioners would like to do on every resolution from here on out? So that's, that's what's before the...
And I think, while I brought it up, I'd never even thought about it until I was looking at Bernaleo County and they just passed an absolutely terrible resolution recently, a PTO. I'll admit that, that's, it's a terrible resolution. And it was a three to two vote. And so as I was reading through what they had approved, I noticed that the three Commissioners that voted for it, signed, and then the two that didn't stamped, voted no. And I thought, well, that's an interesting, I've never thought of that. And, and I think Lee County does it as well, to show where you sit. And I don't know if it was a big deal or not, I just had never seen it. I thought, well, that's interesting. I don't know if our Commission's ever thought about it, so I thought, well, maybe it's something to discuss. If nobody wants to do it, that's, I totally get it. But I, I think it is just on those resolutions, kind of like what we have today. Which one do we have going today? The, oh, the USMCA that, in support of... So if you're not, you could say, I voted no, and, and those that voted yes could sign it. Just a thought, I had seen that, I, I'd never heard of it, I'd never seen anyone else do it until I started looking around at some others. So that's why I toss that out there for discussion, if anyone has any.
I'm fine with it. I think it's a...
We've got the HIDA thing and we can see the, the HIDA resolution by Lee County. I like putting my name forward against, you know.
I think I'd rather us all sign our names and check yes or no. I've seen them like that as well, but instead of a stamp, I would rather us all sign and check yes or no. I mean, we need to own our vote, so.
Hundred percent agree.
Well, it's, and I mean, especially as, as, you know, whoever's the Chairman at the time, if you voted against the resolution, well, now you're signing it. Acting like you're in support of it. And I just thought, you know, there's resolutions that we could put through here that I totally could disagree with or some you all could disagree. Now all of a sudden, you have to sign it. I thought, well, this would, this would allow you to at least show where you were on it. So it's just a thought, but if you don't like it...
I like going after the meeting.
Absolutely.
We do it then, we sign it and be done with it. That's all right.
And then, no need for stamps or anything, you'll, you'll indicate your vote and your signature for the vote. Or indicate your vote and not sign it, whatever is appropriate.
Can you pull up the HIDA grant modification to look at that? Or is that a no, no, yes? I mean, it's got a, it's got an example in there.
Look at it as an example, sure.
So on page, I'm sorry, page 52?
Page 52?
Yes, ma'am. Right there. Something like that? Is that what we're looking at?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think that's a great way to do it, so.
You too.
You had a...
We're just assigning several copies of each resolution, just so you're aware of that. So we need originals on all of them. Okay. Need to write, like, have them... On all the resolutions? And when would you like for those to begin? One have them ready for you at this meeting, except for...
I think it's fine. I mean, we can do it the next meeting. I don't, yeah, I don't need it today. Did you have any other questions?
I don't have, I don't have it ready for you this morning.
Oh, yeah.
Again, next meeting, that would be...
Yeah, that's fine. No problem.
And you're going to come after the meeting down to my office to sign? Correct?
Yes, ma'am.
We're going to inundate you.
You're going to love this game. It's going to be great.
And to be clear, just so, just so Gay knows, what are we asking? Just the special resolutions? Is that kind of overlooked? We're not looking for all resolutions.
No, I was thinking like special resolutions.
Yeah.
Like we had...
Can you do that?
Sure, you can do whatever you want, as long, I mean, it's a board vote. I mean, but if you want to signify what your vote was on certain resolutions, others you don't. I mean, it may be easier for Gay to know, if she's going to do this on every one, she'll put it on every one like this and, and...
What would constitute special resolutions in, in the, the Board, in the Commissioners' Board?
I think anything we're sending to the state, you know, the, the border wall that we did, when we were against abortion, the Second Amendment Sanctuary, the USMCA. Any of those, I would say, anything that I think we're sending up to especially our legislation, because I'm sure we'll do that once or twice more. Even though they do some brilliant work, sometimes we might not agree with them, so.
And then those resolutions that are just routine kind of business would be the same we've been doing. The vote would be recorded and the Chairman would sign off on the resolution.
I think so.
Yeah, and I like this one, how it has just no abstain.
Yeah, yeah, I think that's...
Because sometimes some of us do have to abstain.
And I assume if they are not in attendance, we can maybe stamp it, not in, it's not...
Yeah, that's a good. I like it.
Okay. So...
Like a motion? Or is that just kind of a routine?
That's, that's agreed to business and we'll take care of that as a...
Discussion direction.
As a matter of logistics. All right. Next item is the HIDA grant modification.
He's here.
Sorry.
We're all staring at you.
First time, first time.
Good morning.
Morning, Board.
Morning.
I am Lennon Lewis. I'm with the Drug Task Force. I'm the commander out there. This modification is basically to add to our, our general budget, I think, is 368,000, somewhere around there. This would be the 31,838. It would be for new vehicle, for the operations of the Drug Task Force, daily operations to do the, the work that we do out there.
Does anyone have any questions?
I do not.
Which question? Question? I have no questions. So do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve that.
Second.
Have a motion in a second. Please call for the vote.
Crockett?
Yes.
McCutcheon?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next item is Stantec proposal for pavement management, data collection, Jason Burns from Public Works.
We're going to get you a frequent flyer card.
I'm afraid you're going to sit in there closer to the front if I'm not careful.
So why do you keep sitting in the back? Come on.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, this is our proposal that we're bringing back before you. I at least discussed it at our June 13th meeting, or 16th meeting, I'm sorry. Where we directed us to go and procure this assessment on the roads. We've gone out and looked at several options and finally found that Stantec has an office out of Phoenix that provides this service. And as you know, they're on our engineering master agreement. So we can go ahead and award this to them and let them get going on this, so that we can bring this back before you as soon as we can, hopefully about the end of the first of the year. And start planning accordingly and prioritizing our road priorities that we have. So with this, we will be provided all the pavement sections and road roughnesses within the county, all 1,220 some odd miles of paved and unpaved. We'll have a visual map that will also identify and give us the condition of all cattle guards, low water crossings and bridges throughout the county. So we feel like this is a, something that's desperately needed right now with the condition of our roads being as in a poor state as they are. So that we can really plan our dollars for next year and, and put together a plan of attack of projects that will be, that will be needed, so. In, in the detailed packet that was included for the meeting, the proposal was in there and then Jason's got a schedule of when specific road to be driven and when the data will be collected. So it's, it's set up as a project and, and Stantec has the resources and the tools and the equipment and to help, number one, assess the current situation, collect the data, and then help, helping the prioritization and planning for subsequent work, projects and resourcing.
Correct.
Any questions?
We've, we've already approved and given direction really to, to go forward with this. I don't have any.
I love it.
So what this will be, just so you know, this will be a budget adjustment to the Public Works Professional Engineering Services budget to allow us to go ahead and award this.
Let me make that one.
Something we need. We've got to, we've got to get on the roads. And it kind of gives us a roadmap, you know, if you're going to a new direction, you need a roadmap and that's where we're at.
I feel like we've had so much momentum going forward on the roads. We just need to keep showing the public that we're continuing that momentum.
It's probably the opportunity when folks say, well, how much do you need and where are you going to put it? This will, it'll be visible. These sections for these reasons, at this cost and this, this standard or this cross-section.
You probably need to follow it up with a bit of a PR campaign as well and let the public know what you're, what you're doing. I mean, I don't know.
One thing this does include, I didn't want to put it out just yet, there will be a visible map that we can make available to the public that shows our current conditions, our locations, that we will include on our website that you can go and kind of see as a live update on our road conditions.
Is that going to be manageable? I mean, can you...
Yes, sir. This proposal includes that software and ability to do that.
Let's tell, let's tell everybody about and have everybody go visit it. I mean, I get hit up all the time for...
Along those lines, we need to blast it on Facebook and get it out.
Yes, ma'am.
Ask the city.
It'll be when we get it and get it in place, so it'll be, it'll be a few months down the road.
Give you a chance to work with Jerry on your plan of attack.
But you're wanting to blast it out that we're even doing it.
I think, I think we need, yeah, I think we need to know that, hey, we're doing it, we're going to have information. And then in the interim, say it's being done right now. And then this is how you can keep up with what this information has, has given us. And so we're going to be allocating funds to these. It's going to upset some people, obviously. But it's going to get everybody on the same page in the county, everybody on the same page with us. So they go, well, hey, why don't you guys pave my road over here? And you say, well, because this road over here is not, this road over here is deteriorated far past yours according to this road assessment. You can get on there and see when we're, when we're there. And the schedule that you've got us as well is, is great, because I was actually telling somebody about it yesterday, I sent out an email and updated schedule. I was going to ask you for one, but we've got an updated schedule. I'm going to email to him and say, hey, this is where your road.
The other thing we're doing in conjunction with this is we've purchased two road counters for Public Works. And we're starting to conduct road counts on the roads, road counters, the little tubes you lay across the road. So we, we are starting to calculate AADTs and ESOS and that will play in with this. When we get the conditions of the road, when we go in to prioritize, we'll have the counts on the road so that we'll be able to look at a condition and the use of the road and really, it'll be clear-cut prioritization.
And you're going to keep me updated on this?
Of course.
You can go to the website. I'm going to expect a little more than just the website.
He's going to put the link on his phone.
Any other questions or comments?
No.
All right.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the Stantec proposal for paving, for pavement management data collection services.
A second.
We have a motion in a second. If there's no further discussion, please call for the vote.
Crockett?
Yes.
McCutcheon?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Eddie County Fire Service Training Complex Classroom and Mr. Mack, the training rates scheduled.
Morning, Josh.
Morning, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. Are y'all today?
Good, are you?
So we've gone back through and we made some revisions on our contract. You'll see the old one in there and then also the highlights are the changes. We have been working with the Treasurer's Office to assure that payment can be accepted prior to, because they have to call in their credit cards. So Betsy and Lori have a system that we believe will work out well. I did allow Betsy to buy a program that assists with the tracking of the invoices, sending it out. It'll allow us to pull cleaner reports so we can see what we need to do. There is an option for PayPal on there. We talked to Lori and at this time, we can't utilize that. So as we grow into the future, it'll be an option if we can ever take that. So, but we feel like this should clean some things up and help everybody out on both sides, our side and the community side. And then Betsy also wanted me to let everybody know that she is with the Chamber of Commerce. So when people are looking for a place to rent, we are a recommendation through them. Any questions to the changes?
I just want to say thank you for getting these done so quickly. I know we were a little hard on you last time, but
All right.
These, I think, these are legitimate changes to help you guys more than anything and to simplify the process. So I just want to tell you thank you and I like the changes, like what you guys have done.
I likewise appreciate you getting them in quickly. Josh, I had a couple of questions.
Yes, sir.
So we've got the highlighted yellow right here and on the prior copy, you had like a two and a half percent credit card fee and all that kind of stuff, so that's all gone away with?
The credit card fee?
It's still there.
Yeah, it's still there. That's, that's what the county charges to run a credit card.
No.
Correct?
No. That's what the company charges.
The company charges us, so.
And so is that passed along to the customer still?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, so, payment and contract.
On page 78, it has, it mentions a two and a half percent fee that will be...
And so, and so the, and then so the, but the new, the highlighted, that was the only changes that are done to the contract? Is that correct? The highlighted yellow?
Yes.
Okay, so we still do have the two and a half percent fee. Is there anything in there, because apparently I didn't, didn't read it correctly? Is there anything in there, say, can't we just keep a credit card on file or anything like that for some of these? Because there's some $75 room charge fees, $350 for doing X, Y, or Z. Can we keep a credit card on file? And just, and just charge these guys before, not guys, individuals?
So honestly, Commissioner, we, we could add that wording in. I mean, if you wanted approved with that modification to it, we could do that. At this point, no. That's, that's not the way that we were planning on doing it. Because we, you know, we'd have to other, the pitchers supply them to, in my opinion, the person that's in charge of that so that they can address that and then we'd follow up with the payment on that. But we wouldn't be able to book another reservation until that was paid. Yeah, is how we've handled it in the past and we've only had to charge it one time.
Okay, you wouldn't be able to book another reservation for the same room until?
Until you had fulfilled your obligations to the facility.
I'd like to say I can't store credit card information.
Okay, that's the issue. Okay, and, and we have a provision here. It looks like we charge a two and a half percent monthly finance charge or something.
It should be put back in here, because you've changed it and removed.
Yeah, so we'll add...
You need to put that back in.
Okay, so we'll put the two and a half percent back in.
Okay, so the two and a half percent fee, you know, or we could just adjust the fees to reflect that every time it's two and a half percent. I always get a little, I'm like, really, you can turn it to?
I know.
It kind of bugs me.
I just went through that yesterday, paying for something.
Yeah.
It's 3%, I said, just add it in the price, because you'll get less reaction out of me.
Oh, no, I'm like, I'm like, fine, I'll just send you a check and I'm going to pay two and a half percent. And then we're in the, and then we're waiting for, you know, a check for 30 days. And then you have a two and a half percent finance charge in here as well, I read, correct? If they don't pay within so many days, so, so this is a check... Um, if they don't pay within so many days, so, so this is a check or credit card kind of deal?
Well, we've eliminated the, if you don't pay within so many days by accepting the, we just flat out don't accept payment after.
Till four thirty?
Yep, the day before your reservation, so the four thirty, the day before your reservation, you have to pay in full. We're asking you to get everything in.
That's what the Chamber does and that's what the Branson's do as well. It's in that contract.
And that's just to, that's just to assure that it gets through the Treasurer's Office and they, they start reconciling at four thirty, so. That's why we set that specific time.
Okay. All right. Long for you, long for you to prepare, I think. I think this, this looks better. Have Cass, have you gone over this thing and everything looks all right to you?
So we'll go back in the payment and contract portion. We'll put back in that two and a half percent and then we'll put it into effect with that change.
Two and a half percentages.
Or rates, rates, yeah, we could, we could look at that.
Target about two and a half percent more.
Okay.
But whatever.
Commissioner?
Oh, I like, thank you, Josh, for getting this.
Yes, sir.
I'm good, so I appreciate it as well, so if there's no further questions.
My motion may be accepted.
Second.
We have a motion in the second. If there's no further discussion, please call for the vote.
Rocket? Yes. Questions?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
Paulson?
Yes.
The next item is the, uh, rate schedule for the training complex for fire service.
Okay, so again, you see the old one versus the new one, um.
Which one is which? Can you?
Okay, the first one you see, it has the classroom breakdown, four to ten hours, two to four and up to two hours. That's the new one. Yeah, the old one was a day or one to four hours. So the reason for that change is we've been accommodating a lot of safety meetings, so they were wanting a discounted rate. Because they were only there an hour, hour and a half, so we tried to break it down, um, to make it more accommodating for the customer. We did have, sorry, I'm trying to look, and a slight increase on the classroom one, two, and bay three of ten dollars. And that's just to help with not having a deposit. Because I didn't want to have a deposit where we were going to have to collect money, submit paperwork to finance, end up getting a check cut, to cut it back to the people. So that's why we did that. Aside from that, pretty much everything else stayed the same, like for a whole day. And then obviously, anything over ten hours will, will work with the customer to accommodate that, because we don't get that request very often.
Questions?
No, I like, I like this and again, I appreciate your expedited.
Yes, this was Betsy. She did a, a great job. She worked her towel.
And I appreciate you guys working with the Chamber as well, because I know there's a great need for meeting rooms.
Yes, ma'am.
Your contract provides for the no-shows, so the rate schedule is here's what you're going to pay, but if you don't show, you're already committed, so.
So we give them twenty-four hours, twenty-four hours to cancel. We used to do twenty, forty-eight. Um, we have had some people call the morning of and say, look, this is what happened. Betsy decided to tell them, you still have to make your payment and we haven't had any issue with that, but we can refund up to, with a twenty-four hour notice.
Um, a couple of things. Last time when we went through the discussion, you said we were one of the lowest in car spad.
Yes, sir. We, so we're, we actually called around and rates have changed from the original outlook on things when we started versus now. So we're actually very comparable to all these other facilities. Um, the only price that we don't, um, have is, like, if you wanted to rent the whole facility. That is something that a lot of other places offer is basically, um, like the Carousel House, you can rent the whole facility for two thousand dollars a day. But we don't have that request, so, uh, at this point, they pretty much are staying too. Like if Oxy wants Classroom One, Two, and Bay Three and Four as an example, that's how they'll rent it is each. Because they're using it for different divisions within, so instead of causing the havoc of their budgeting, they pay individually per division essentially. To track expenses. So we are comparable. We did go back and verify that and that's why you don't see a, the only increase you really see is the, um, up to two hours. Because that was, we got more comparable with that.
Okay, yeah, I like you've taken out the twenty-five dollars per hour.
Yeah.
So just do a minimum charge of one hundred and twenty-five on that. So these, so what building did you compare to just around town and where?
Yeah, Betsy called the Carousel House. She called the Chamber of Commerce. The Stevens Inn.
Okay.
So, and some of them are a little less than us, but also you have to remember in our training classrooms, we offer a computer, projector, TVs. We have sound in the room and that's not a feature that everybody else has, so we still want to be under them to be competitive. And then we also wanted to have more resources.
Okay, can we go through the apparatuses here?
Oh, yes, sir.
Tell me if they're all up and, all up and going, good.
Okay.
So we've got confined space rescue, that, is that one working and good?
So the confined space, they do that in the five-story usually and then they use the tank battery props. And we only have one customer that does that and they actually allow our volunteers to train. So it's in an agreement with Oxy that we had prior to, so we don't actually charge for that. The only other people that do use confined space at all is, um, DOE and we have had no issues with that, with the props that they utilize.
But it's, I mean, it's, it, okay, and the fire truck, that's working?
Yeah, the fire truck works.
Prop?
The props are out on the training ground. Um, they just need some upgrades, but yes, they do work and.
Okay, SCBA trailer?
The SCBA trailer is fully intact and available. They're all out there.
Classroom grounds, hose ladder pump test, good there?
Yes, sir.
And then driving course, I assume so?
Yep.
And then the fire ground, full facility, that's all of these combined.
That's if you want the whole entire thing and we can't put anybody else out there, because some, like I said, sometimes we have the SWAT team using the residential. We have DOE using the five-story. We have a fire department in the storefront and then we have CFD out there doing a pump test. Yes, sir.
Commissioner?
I think it's great. I, I, I like the fact that you, that you called around and, and were comparable to everybody else.
Yes, sir.
I think that's important. I, I am curious as to how that compares to, uh, our actual expenses. Did you compare that?
So, yeah, Betsy, you want to come up here? So she, she tracks all that and she sends me a spreadsheet, um, usually on a monthly basis. And with this new software, we're going to be able to produce reports a lot faster than her having to go back through invoices and put it in Excel herself. But I, I believe we had sixty-five thousand, correct, in income? So we had sixty-five thousand in income and I think our expenses, yeah, were around. Twenty or twenty-four.
Okay, we're covering expenses, because I know that was.
Yes, sir.
At the last meeting, were we really covering expenses, uh, with the rates we were getting?
Yes.
I want to be sure that we are.
And the other changes that we've made is we do have our key fob system operational now, so we can get them into the building. So we actually, part of their requirement is to come in before their appointment, pick up their key fob, go for a tour. Betsy verifies everything the night before and then basically the only way she has to come in is if we get a phone call because there's an issue. She's not having to be there, because that was a huge expense in the beginning. It was a lot of overtime. And then once they met their, my overtime budget, once it was depleted, my salary staff would start having to go in at five o'clock in the morning. For the safety meeting, so that was a big help that Brian helped us get knocked out with, getting the door lock system in. And we're finally fully operational on that, so.
Kudos, Brian. I have a question. This is going to put us way out into the weeds, but I know some of these rentals, they charge for that coffee service. Is that something that you guys would want to look at?
We just offer it.
Did we include that into this? Because I know that can get pretty expensive if you have somebody that uses a different cup every time they get coffee and then the coffee and.
So a lot of them, they cater in food and is what they've been doing is they leave us the cups.
Okay.
So we really.
I just want to sell ourselves short on that, because I know that is an expense.
Because that's something that we monitor as well as how much coffee is going out and we, they, they've actually been very responsible. We want to come in and Betsy and them stay on them to make sure that they shut the coffee pot off, drain it, um, don't leave three full coffee pots there. And then obviously, once the ladies get in the office, they kind of check and monitor the coffee, is do we, to make sure that there's just a pot sitting there. And then after about ten o'clock, we go shut it all down and if they want any, they'll usually come up and ask, you know, can we make another pot of coffee, so.
Okay, thank you.
Question? Over for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the training complex rate schedule as presented.
Second.
Have a motion in a second. If there's no further discussion, please call for the vote.
Rocket? Yes. Questions?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
Paulson?
Yes.
Thank you. It's good to see you. Yeah, great job.
Next item on the agenda is the fire service shop billing improvements.
Chairman, there are commissioners, uh, consistent with the, uh, last meeting discussion. I did have proposals in hand, so I just prepared a, an agenda request, uh, to demonstrate that those projects are ready to go. It'd be five ten-ton, um, heat pump units that would go on bays one, three, and four. And, yeah, it'd be easier to, so just to the right, see the yellow circle right there in the middle? So just to the right of that yellow circle, those two evaporative coolers, you could draw next to them and place the ten-ton heat pumps right there. Um, I call that the breezeway. And then the other three heat pumps will be, um, located at the three evaporative coolers to your left, um, where the red circle is. Those are on the ground. Um, they still require a crane, but they get mounted on the ground, set up on a stand. Some ductwork will have to be provided in order to accommodate the returns for refrigerated air. Um, we believe all the electrical, existing electrical, um, to those evaporative coolers, uh, will accommodate the heat pumps as well, just the way it was wired up. Vendors had plenty of time to look and relook at the scope of work, verify, answer all my questions that I had. And so I'm confident with what I'm presenting to you. As far as the roof goes, um, this comes up once every couple of years. Now, you can go back to that same picture, please, Sharon. I'll just leave it here for a little bit. Uh, so that whole area in yellow turns into a bowl. When we get the one and two inch an hour rains that we typically get out there by the airport. Um, like I said, it, something happens about once a year, but if it doesn't happen every year, it happens at least once every two years. And this year, I believe we've had two of them, um, kind of back to back within two or three weeks. And so I sat down with Roof Care, uh, talk about what our problems were and this was the solution. So everywhere you see a red mark is where we're going to put an overflow scupper. So when the water volume overcomes the downspouts that are already installed on the building, it'll just start shooting straight out of the holes. Uh, because what my concern is, is Josh has sent me videos where this water's coming in kind of in the middle of a room like this. Where we got vent pipes sticking out right there and water's coming in there. Well, if water's coming in there, that means the whole roof's filled up. At that point, it's like, Josh, I would appreciate if you leave the room. One of these things. And so it is a serious issue out there. I mean, we're joking about it, but it is serious and it, it, you know, we haven't collapsed yet. I don't think we would, but there is a potential, uh, for that to happen. Some of the reasons why this happened, if you went back, I should have took some better pictures of the downspouts, but the downspouts are residential grade. They're about this big, so part of this scope of work, he'll cut out those old downspouts, put in a, a bigger one. Pretty much where you could shove a Coke can or a water bottle down and, and get through there. Whereas right now, if, for some reason, a Coke can or a water bottle ended up on the roof, it would clog the downspouts that are there currently, so. And just before the meeting, I did hand out several of these, just for your information. Uh, several of you are new to the commission since we've accomplished much of this work and so just wanted to kind of go back. Commission approved in the special meeting to, to purchase that property out there back in twenty fifteen. And it's just kind of been, um, do, do what we can when we can, uh, for the remainder of the time. Working from information, you'll see the last few pages here. It's a portion of the first condition assessment that I did out there specifically. And they had identified quite a bit of money, but real no scope of work or how that budget was developed. And so I wanted an assessment to start working out of, so we could check off the boxes, so to speak. So you'll see anywhere where you have a red line through a picture towards the back of that and anywhere where I've added red, those are things that we've accomplished to date. Obviously, there's not, it's not full of red, so there's still plenty to do.
And then is what we'll do is what we've, um, done as projects without, basically internal without going through Brian. I'll get those together to add to this for y'all, so that we have every project that's been completed.
So we'll use the remainder of that assessment to project forward and, and provide our outlook and our strategic views.
Any time work needs to happen here, we need to refer, obviously, like for example, the five ten-ton package units. Those aren't in the assessment, uh, you know. When they're just shop bays, for the most part, I think evaporative cooling is okay, but the way some of that space is being used. It makes sense to put real conditioned air in there, both for the, for the, the types of equipment that he's storing in bay one or, or his staff is storing in bay one. I just have a hard time pumping humidity into buildings or rooms full of metal. It just bugs the heck out of me. Like I said, and then obviously with this classroom, um, every single one of us is a little heater. We get a hundred and eighty of us in there and I think, what did I see? Had numbers up to one thirty, two thirty-five? And so you got two thirty, two hundred and thirty-five little heaters in there, potentially, we need to cool them off better and I can't do that with, we can't do that with evaporative cooling.
What questions do we have?
I don't have any.
No, okay. I have no, I agree with you a hundred percent.
I guess I have a question and Roberta, with the monies. Now, this is a stretch, but with the, how much did, did he have from the sale and all that stuff that we put towards radios? One point something?
One point four million dollars. He gave you some of that and then we took the rest of that back toward the radio tower, the majority of it.
Okay, because I was wondering what it would look like if we were to give some of that back to cover this? But then take out us the, what we, what we're going to have as surplus to kind of cover the radios?
We allocated that money to the towers. It would just come out of your cash reserves, which you already allocated that money.
Mr. Chairman, um, and then on that side note, we are almost done with that assessment. We'll be bringing it to the commission and there may, may be some cost savings. So we may have that option to make an adjustment after the fact.
Great. When are we going to discuss the surplus?
Next mission meeting? It was brought in July for the final budget review and the hearing closeout, but it wasn't talked about. I can bring that back for discussion and direction to what you guys want to do with the surplus.
Okay, I was just trying to think where, where to get these monies from, um, but they need to be done. I'm in agreement with everyone, so.
Is there, is there no other monies we've got stashed away somewhere in to do with? I mean, I'm, I look to you guys and I'm coming from Murda though. I mean, I'm, I'm looking to you guys and calling from Roberta though. And I don't want to take anything from Brian, just so we're clear.
Yes, technically there is. We do have the building construction funds. We also have a capital improvement fund that has about $200,000 in there. Um, we did not budget anything out of the building improvement fund. We depleted those funds pretty good so far. That's why I did make the suggestion this year that 1.1 million dollar savings should go back to the buildings for some of these purposes. Because we don't have a lot of money in that fund anymore. But those are two other options that you can reallocate to general funds, but at this point, it's going to go to your 3rd.
1.2 million, we're, roads are right.
Right.
Yeah.
So the surplus that we have, we could allocate from the surplus into this fund?
The new surplus for the disaster school year, yes, because you guys have not done anything with that.
Okay.
And that's where this money technically right now will be coming from, if you guys approve.
Okay. Okay. Does anyone have any other questions on monies?
I don't.
Okay.
Thank you, Roberta.
Thank you so much. Bye.
Mr. Chairman, I make the motion that we, oh, on the wrong page here. I make the motion that we approve the, that we approve the fire service shop building improvements.
Second.
We have a motion in the second. Is there any more discussion? Saying none, please call for vote.
Pocket?
Yes.
McCutcheon?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Please thank your commissioners.
Thank you, commissioners.
I'm going to hang up to help with, assist with Warren.
So the next item is approval of contract with weight construction company. And install commercial-grade chain link fence, and reach around the Eddie County detention center.
Good morning.
First, let me, uh, apologize for how this was submitted. It's actually, this project is going to come out of the jail improvement funds and the project, uh, cost impact's going to be 42,000.
That answered my first question.
Anyone have questions? I know we've discussed this before.
No, I just wanted you to get it done.
Me too.
Yeah. Do you have any questions, Commissioner?
Um, just for, just forgive me here, being a former fencer, putting up 250 feet of eight-foot fence, how many gates?
It's going to have two gates to get into no man's land on each side.
Okay.
However, you know, coming onto, uh, main street here, there's a little bit of a pavilion. And so we kind of kill those fences off into that pavilion and then go back into the building.
Okay.
And so those fences instead, naturally, you think they're going here, but we're going to keep them kind of street facing. So they can be bigger gates in case we ever do need to get some sort of vehicle in there or something like that.
Okay.
Um, so the aesthetics of it, a little weird. We come off of the medical unit that's located on the north side of the block. So we come right off the corner of that building and head straight towards the, the column of that pavilion. And what I'm trying to do there is in case, should we need a crane to go there in the future. I want to leave enough space between that fence and the street to where we don't have to wipe out fence to plug the crane right there.
Yeah.
You know, try and, try and oversee, anything we do on that roof, we got to get the biggest crane in the world. Astronomical prices every day, so it just is what it is.
Uh. Okay. I love the idea of putting the, the fence there, uh, but what happens if they cut the fence? Do, can we, what would it cost to put like motion detectors inside the fence?
We can enhance that with it. So we actually drop, we actually drop two more, uh, cameras at the corners of both portions that we're talking about for, uh, visual review. We've already done that before.
Okay, but would that, what about motion detectors?
We could put them in there. You just got to be cautious, of course, you know, nighttime you want them on, daytime you don't.
That thing, yeah, that kind of, but we can look at, uh, vendors, look at that and supplement that, absolutely.
But this whole process with the exterior security is kind of, we're, we're moving as fast as we can with the things that we're ready for. But, um, you will be seeing lighting improvements. We kind of want to, um, get more LED pack lights up on the side right there and make it real bright and visible. Want to assist some of these areas with the motion detectors as well. Um, and we're still, um, developing, uh, similar fencing and, and motion detector type stuff for building two across the street. Where, um, it's not so much on the main drag. We share, we share close proximity with the neighbor to the north. And then we're also wide open to the alley where I believe a lot of, lot of foot traffic gets in there. It's just a really bad place to put one of these things, but.
A lot of times, a lot of times, just having the signs and stuff.
Right.
Up that says motion detectors in this area is a deterrent. Yes, you know, sometimes, it's like having the biggest missile. You have the biggest missile, nobody wants to mess with you.
You know, to, to our defense here, to Warren's defense, I mean, granted, there is no motion detectors on these perimeters. Uh, but there's cameras, especially on building two, where I know they've had some issues. There wasn't any on building one where they did have the penetration. But, um, I don't think, for whatever reason, some of these people, maybe if they get caught, maybe that's what they're trying to do is get inside. And so we just don't want them getting close to the building periods, so.
I agree. I, I love the fence. My thought is razor wire. Get electrified. You can do that. I know about those, that's an option.
That's an old fencing hand you've got there.
Uh, there's, we can get a company to do that. I know exactly who to call on that. Um, so this is going to be eight foot and then we have wire on top or just an eight-foot straight chain link fence?
It's eight foot.
It can be eight foot. I didn't, I was kind of concerned with putting the razor wire on the top.
Right, that was my comment, was it's, it's against policy of the city, so we just need to get a variance from them. I'm sure we could do that if we needed to do that. And then also if it is eight plus one, that's also over the maximum height that the city allows. We could arrange for that, uh, for the biggest, best, best.
I believe 8 foot is right where I, I have a hard time imagining when I'm walking down main street that I'm going to go. Six foot, I could get pretty easy, just me.
Just like a deer.
But eight foot, eh, I might think about that differently. It might be easy to get in, but what if you trip coming out, so. Eight foot is a pretty good deterrent without the razor wire on top. We can always add the razor wire.
Yeah. We're ready for questions too.
Part of it's the message, so.
Different criminals now.
I made the comment, I drove by that place for many years before I worked for the county and I, you know, I knew it was a jail, but I just, I didn't realize. You know, I guess the seriousness of the jail and what all that brings, uh, till I began working for y'all, so.
Pulling up to the help, so.
I just want to say that I think we should go ahead and maybe go to the city and ask for a variance for the razor wire. I, I think we should just move that direction. And I had this discussion with Commissioner Carlson, and I know he's on board with it. But it's going to send a message, especially when we start needing, you know, just depending on what we're going to do with building a new detention center. You know, people need to know that that is a detention center in the middle of our.
Typically, you're going 12 foot with the, what they call the candy cane style, with razor wires on the inside of that. I'm all for it. It's just a deterrent, looking at it, uh, you have to get it tall enough where people don't reach inside and still cut themselves. But then we're also looking at the angle that we're going with the crane too, so you get very much taller. And you have a longer room to do whatever else we're going to be doing later on, so.
Well, I'm 6'5", and that's to have the reach to get to the razor wire.
And, and I've reached out to, uh, the city manager and talked, spoke with him also, let him know.
Okay, so you'll move forward with that?
Yes.
So, and this includes gravel work and everything, because this is 168 bucks a foot, which is pretty high. Okay, that's gravel, everything. All right, I'm in. Biggest, best we can get.
I make the motion to accept it.
Second.
Have a motion in a second. If there's no further discussion, please call for the vote.
Pocket?
Yes.
McCutcheon?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you, Warren. Thank you, Brian.
Thank you, guys.
Look at you go, Mishma. Mr. Chairman, we're already halfway through.
Yeah, I know. What do you say? We got an executive session, a lot of things to handle, so. Yeah, whatever we say, we're lying, so.
All right, the next item is the, uh, resolution and agreement consent, consent agenda.
Does anyone have anything they need to pull?
I do not.
I need to pull R-19-99.
Commissioner?
No, I don't have anything.
And I have nothing. So we'll look for a, uh, motion to approve resolution and consent agenda pulling R-19-99?
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion in a second. If there's no further discussion, please call for the vote.
Pocket?
Yes.
McCutcheon?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Good morning.
Morning.
Hi, Wes, Steve. Um, so the reason I, the reason I pulled, uh, 1999 here is. One, we're going to, just so I understand it, we're going to start taking containers and renting them out. Is that, is that right for cleanup?
This, this portion of it is based, basically on the code enforcement side of stuff. Where we were placing containers out for individuals under the code enforcement. Uh, guidance for cleanup of properties prior to, and I think Cass can vouch for this as well. Prior to, we were placing these out without charging any fee for it. We're basically going against anti-donation clauses.
Okay.
So this is to help Jason and his department absorb some of the costs that it was placing on the county. By placing those out also absolves us of any liabilities under the anti-donation clauses.
Okay, so this is, this has been happening. You just haven't been getting any?
Correct.
Okay.
It's been happening. We did pull them back in and stop it about four or five months ago completely. And have been kind of working towards this end result since then.
So how are we going to, if, if this is, so, so let me get this right. I've got a, Austin, I just got crap everywhere. And you say you got to clean it up, and we're going to bring you a container, and you bring it up, and then I fill it up, and you come get it? Or what? Like, that's basically what happened?
The way it's happened in the past, we typically weren't setting the roll-offs out for individuals that would, we had an open case against. Because precedents told me that if we did that, if we opened a case and then we set a roll-off out for them. We might as well set a roll-off out every time we open a case against someone. So this was a voluntary thing. When people knew they had a property, bought a property that was, uh, junked up, trashed up. They would come to us, they would say, hey, we have a problem, can you help us out? You know, can you supply a roll-off for us to clean this property voluntarily? Or something substantial happened in this case. Uh, when this is all over with and the forms are all filled out, we're going to have a hardship form as well. It'll waive these fees if they meet certain monetary requirements. And, and help those individuals that simply can't do it on their own.
Okay. Of course, we'll, we'll run all that by Cass, but that's the idea that we had whenever we met with code enforcement and, uh, public. So we'll, we'll, we'll meet with Cass and see if there's any type of form that we can fill out. And, and get the information needed to see if, if it's even possible for us to, to do something like that. But it was an idea that was thrown out there that on hardship cases, um, we would have a form that they could fill out and apply for like a grant or something.
Can they meet a threshold that?
To do it.
Okay, all right.
But your practices and procedures you're going to develop, you're not going to let anybody getting ready to remodel a house, turn around and sell. You're not going to lease these out to somebody like that.
That was not the.
Practicing procedures that like Commissioner is talking about is making sure it's going to be used in connection with.
Right.
Code enforcement only.
Okay. Only cleanups and, uh, Jason has out there at, at the Public Works facility, there's four roll-offs that are designated for code enforcement. So, you know, it's, it's pretty much limited to the use of those four in his personnel to have the, the time and the availability to move those in and out for us as well.
Okay, so it might be important to make that clarification as part of code enforcement. Here's a pot, here's an option, as opposed to, hey, the county's got roll-offs to, to rent.
Right.
That's what I was going with. I saw a lot of gray areas here. Hey, we're leasing stuff out that people could be paying private business for, first of all. And then if we are leasing them to, um, non-contributors or just taking them out or something and doing it. Then how do we actually get paid for taking the containers out? And then do we create dependency from those, from, from a certain group of people saying, hey, they're just bringing clean gear up all the time? You know, I, I, I don't like trash. I think it's, I think it's, it's, it's a, terribly, I think we need to be careful in how we do it and how we word it. And go forward cautiously with it so that first we're not hurting private business and then we don't create dependency for certain people. And then, um, you know, also make sure that we're not trampling on private property rights as we're, as we're doing that, so.
We'll, we'll maybe want to amend the resolution to, to tie it down closer to the, the code enforcement. Because it does appear that I need one, hey, I want it out of my house, bring it out here and I'll keep it for a week and pay you.
You can haul it off.
Yeah.
So, and, you know, we may consider kind of dump fee to it or something like that if there is something.
Well, I reworded the resolution and as long as it's.
Okay.
Approve it based on my modification to tie it to the code enforcement.
Okay, um, all right, I, I'm okay. I think if Cass makes.
Want to bring back next meeting?
I'm okay.
Whatever y'all want to do.
I think I'm fine as long as.
Y'all, as long as you put the word in.
Okay, Mr. Commissioner, I make a motion that we approve 19, uh, R-19-99 pending, uh, pending Cass and, and, and Wes and Steve's amendments to it. Based on the discussion that we've had.
Approved. I mean, I agree.
Second. Get ready to go.
All right, we have approval in a second, all kinds of things, so with that, if there's no other discussion, please call for the vote.
Pocket?
Yes.
McCutcheon?
Yes.
Yes.
Carlson?
Yeah.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is project updates, um, update from Public Works, Burns.
You have to get your bifocals off for these. Hey, Jason, you need to start bringing us cheater glasses if you want us to.
Email last night, we got some more.
Yeah, I blew it up on my cheater at home.
I even gave you a recommended Zoom.
So thank you, Chairman Commissioners. Um, our update for this meeting, I provided you with our current schedule. I've also provided, if you'll see on the back, and we'll get to it. Um, our current issue reporter. It shows everybody that's called in and reported using our online and call-in system. But as you can see, we have a resolution to all those and they're being added to our schedule. And we'll go through those here in a minute, but we'll start out with the South Road Department. Um, our crew one is finishing up the shoulder rehab on Niemeyer, and then it'll be moving to King Road. Our crew two is actually on King Road, beginning subgrade prep and shooting grades for that. Then we have our trucking and cattle guard crew. They've accomplished a, uh, we're keeping them mainly on potholes. That we have in several locations throughout the county, and you can see us and how they are completing those and how long it's taken them. We also have part of our trucking crew that is continuing to mow throughout the county. Um, you'll also see as you go down, I should have highlighted this for you. Uh, the sections under what do not have actual start dates and do not have times on them. Our road maintenance, potholes, blading and signs, this is our, essentially our to-do list that we are working on scheduling as we go through. And we'll be incorporating into the schedule here for the next meeting or, uh, as we come up. Go to the north. Uh, we have our crew one that just finished on, uh, 204. We have our Crew One that just finished on 204. Oh, they just finished 206. I'm sorry, I'll be moving to 217. And that's both Crew One and Two. And then after they're finished with 217, they'll move to CR 222. And essentially what they're doing there is they're pulling the shoulders and rolling those in. Our trucking and cattle guard crew are the same way. They've been working mostly on potholes. We do have a crew out mowing. And there's been a few cattle guards that we've been working on in conjunction with that. And you'll also see our to-do list under that as well. That'll be coming in and be working into the schedule soon. We'll go to the next page, which will be our projects. Bound Road, we had a meeting yesterday where we presented our engineered PowerPoint to several stakeholders. And we'll be following up with them and seeing what we can come and present to you before we move forward with that one. Derrick Road Chip Seal started last week on the ninth. And they are, they put down the first penetration and they've pulled off of it for a week to allow that chip to be rolled and worked into the oil. And then they'll be coming back next week and finishing that up. Black River Village, they're ongoing on the engineering on that. And so we'll be bringing that back to you hopefully about October, November to bid that one out and award. On Suris Road, you approved that one on the fifth, or the third, I apologize. And we will be, they're scheduled to start on that one here within the next week, week and a half. And that won't take them more than a week to finish that one. Musketeel, you also awarded on the third. We've issued a PO for that one. And they're gonna be scheduling that one here within the next week to go out and finish that. The Eddie County Road Assessment, we awarded that one this morning. And so we'll be kicking them off and rolling down on that one. You'll see how that's scheduled out a little bit. Cherry Road, we received a proposal for the engineering. We need to go meet with the city and put together a proposal for that and bring it back to you with an MOU to approve before we move forward with that one. But we do have an engineered proposal on that one for the engineering. And we'll be meeting with the city probably in the next week or so. Red Campbell Road, we have engineers out there looking at that one to.
What's the Red Campbell?
Red Camp, Red Road and Campbell Road is a joint project with Eddie County and Lee County.
Which one's in Eddie, Red?
Yes. Red Road is Eddie, Campbell Road is Lee County. And it's a road over there that's a halfway, Lee Land. It starts right there and goes up, cuts back into Eddie County, runs along the county line and then goes back into Lee County and ties it into the jail highway. And Corey Needham has that on his to-do list and approached us about wanting a partner on it. And we were interested and we've talked to him and he asked us if we'd take the lead on that with the engineering. And said we would, so we're gonna bring you a proposal on that. They're putting us together an estimate to do the engineering and essentially what it would cost to do the road. And we'll bring that back to you and present it as well as with an MOU from Lee County. So we'll flip the page to landfill. We have, we're working on the tire proposal, the shredder. So we could show you a balance sheet of that, of how much it's gonna cost versus leasing and buying it and what we could essentially do with the shreddings. We're gonna present that to the Solid Waste Committee. But we have a meeting scheduled for the ninth. And then we'll bring that back with a recommendation to present it to the commission. We also are gonna have a transfer station presentation. We had one of our engineers put together a presentation for a transfer station that they will also be presenting on the ninth to the Solid Waste Committee that will be, if we have the recommendation from the Solid Waste Committee to come present to the commission, we'll bring our engineers down and have them present to the commission or in a separate meeting, however that we're directed to do that. We're also starting to work on Cell Six design. As everyone knows, we're filling up our cells quicker than what they're designed. So we're already moving forward with the next cell on the design and the preliminary engineering on that. And also is with the land acquisition to the east of the landfill. We've got some ride away and some surveying going through so we can do the preliminary work and the expansion, the future expansion of the landfill that's gonna inevitably happen. We also are gonna do some improvements to the containment fence to, we've seen, we've received violations in the past for the litter and the wind blowing the trash off to the east that we will, we're looking at doing some improvements to the containment fence to keep that on the landfill and off the ranchers' land and keep from killing cows. We've also added to the landfill as a project is a grappler truck acquisition. I've spoken to several of you about wanting to acquire a grappler truck. And we're gonna look and bring you a proposal for that and see if we can't get that approved. The last thing on your sandpoint schedule is, if you'll see on your report tracker, we have a spot here for landfill reporting and complaints. I think we need to do a little more PR that you can submit litter and dumping concerns on this. But also, as it was recommended last time, we probably need to do an individual one for the landfill and put it on the landfill page that people could submit there. So I think we're gonna move this one off of the road. We're gonna do Road Department and landfill separately. And we'll put a separate, essentially the same reporter, but do it separately on the landfill. And so that's what that last thing on the landfill is. Is that we're working on doing a system that we can report and address some of the illegal dumping in the county. So with that, I will stand for questions, comments, concerns.
Great job again. And I would suggest that you work with Mary Garwin from the Bootification Committee to get the word out about the landfill because her connections are very vast and she already has a lot of those venues set up to grasp that out. And she's really good at it. And we work simultaneously, so I would use her resources. That's all.
All right. I looked through a lot of complaints and made sure my people were on there and they are. I appreciate that. So. I've got you on there.
Well, and the idea behind this is we want everyone to know that they are being heard and that we're not just taking complaints and ignoring them. So everyone that calls in, everyone that submits on the webpage, you can see the date, who it is, the location, the description of their complaint. And then the separate part of that is the date addressed and assigned in the resolution to it and how we addressed it.
So is there a feedback to the, what is the feedback loop, I guess? So how do they, they've been heard or their item has been actioned?
I've encouraged the road managers to discuss with the people and call them if they can. Some of them don't want feedback. They just wanna call and report.
So an option, and maybe that's something that, you know, following up with your landfill element of, here's a reporting point. Maybe with Jerry on, you know, we're getting road issues or whatever. But for the road elements, you could put a subset of your Gantt chart for your activities and projects, just a simple post so that when they come in and they can see, here's what's been done, here's what's been planned. Just a simple one, that would be an easy feedback loop.
Right. On the website? Yeah. And definitely keep that updated.
Yes, sir. Yeah, once a month, you know, refreshed monthly.
Yes, sir.
Something that doesn't require a lot of time or something. We could find the right person to provide the update.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I think that feedback and communication, a lot of people just wanna know somebody's listening to them.
Absolutely.
You know, that's the main thing, and we've talked about that.
Yes, sir.
I think Jason has done a very good job as far as getting out in the community and stuff and talking to peoples. But, you know, it's a continuous process.
For me, this has been a fantastic tool. I just leave it in my office, so when they yell at me, I can pull it up. Yeah, and it's been great. And they've been super excited because I'm like, well, look, here it is. And here's what they're doing. People have really responded well to appreciate, just like you said, they're being heard. They see that it's on the list and it's been really, really good. The only thing I have, I didn't see is 26th.
I was just about to mention that. I will add that to the list. We do have Smith Engineering looking at a road section for that and gonna give us an estimate with, they're the ones looking at the estimate for Cherry Road. And every time he calls me, I bug him about it. I will have it on the list next time I present this to you. I apologize for not having that one on there.
But thank you for this tool. It's helped me tremendously.
And I'll tell you one thing else that could help us is Mike Smith at the Kern Argus. He can call attention to our website and encourage people to get on it. And we would appreciate that, Mike. Thank you.
The other thing that'll be added to your projects list by your next meeting will be all our FEMA projects. We've had some movement on that. Not much to report yet. But by the next, by the next meeting, we'll have all the FEMA projects on there and kind of a, hopefully a timeline on those.
What is, it's not my district, what is Hidalgo's, Hidalgo Roads web number? Do you know?
Ooh, I don't.
I don't either.
No.
Hidalgo and Dark Canyon, I mean, some pretty serious attention. I didn't see them on there.
It actually is. If you go to your South Road Department, and it is on the, let me see where they had it because I was looking at it yesterday with them.
Okay.
Dark Canyon, Potholes and Shoulder Work, it's on your, down here.
Number 50?
Yes, sir.
Is Hidalgo there?
Yeah, that's where they're gonna go from, Hidalgo of Dark Canyon.
Okay.
Because we did talk about that.
Okay, good. Yeah, I know that Hidalgo's, especially Hidalgo's getting really narrow. The guys can't pass. There's a lot of trucks coming out of Rock Creek up there, so.
So that is on their to-do list? And we'll go ahead and get that.
Google Maps says 658.
658? Okay.
That's what Google Maps says.
Oh. Susan's been a commissioner for a long time. She knows. Any brother?
No. I just, I just, I don't know if that's right, but that's what it says.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jason.
Next update is from Mr. Mack, Fire Services and Food Building on the Lining, Volunteer Fire Department update.
Mr. Chairman Commissioners, we had a meeting. Commissioner Carlson and I attended down in Loving. They wanna put together a small committee. One of their counselors, the mayor, and I recommended their financial guide manual so that way we can see financials. They wanna present three options. So we'll establish those three options. One will obviously be them continuing on on their own, one with us taking it fully, and then a joint option where if they ever wanted to take it back, that would be a viable option for them. I'll be reaching out to Mr. Davis. I know he's had a lot going on, so we're gonna sit down and talk here in the next week. And then I'll get him filled in and briefed. And if he wants to have a designeer himself, Commissioner Carlson said he would be on the committee as the commission representative. And then I'll be getting with Roberta for the financial portion. So we'll be kinda just pulling different people in and out to these meetings to try to get these options set up. We were able to get their ISO evaluation waived for a year. So that'll hold them at a six. And I did explain to the council that, you know, Malaga or Otis, however we decided to classify them, if we put them with a department, that it would actually increase their ISO rating because those are lower ISO rated departments. Aside from that, there was, the only mention of anything was they had mentioned that possibly they would be able to fund a person to be kinda designated for that part of the county to help us with response down there because we did, I did give them the same numbers I had presented to you guys at the last meeting. And they realized the demand, so essentially we'll see what we can work out with that deal whenever we start meeting. But at this point, Otis Volunteer Fire Department, I will be getting with Chief David Looney today as long as that's all right with all of you, to have them start utilizing apparatus in that station and giving their guys the go-ahead to start assisting our guys. I did explain to the mayor and the council that I don't want them driving the trucks until they are completely trained, been through the VFIS and they're following our policy, essentially our rules that we require. So that class is coming up here at the end of September, first part of October. Those four members will be certified in that. We did get to go ahead to order them bunker gear through the village. So we were slowly moving forward.
Yes, sir. No, I did, we did have a good meeting. We went to the Village Council meeting. They are concerned as to what to do. One of our suggestions was that maybe they need to have a town hall meeting where they kinda got a feel, they get a feel from the citizens of the Village of Loving as to how the citizens wanna proceed. Are they interested in having a volunteer, a volunteer fire department? Or would they rather just contract with the county to provide that service? You know, one of the things I said when I was speaking at the council meeting was that kinda as we try to develop alternatives, we kinda need to know what the public of Loving wanna do because we don't wanna dictate to Loving as to what they need to do. We wanna help them with what they wanna do. And so we had that, but we had a very good meeting. I think that we got a lot of interest. One of the things that they were going to do was go back and look where the two fire stations were less than a mile away. But they had a clearance in which they said the state fire marshal at some time had given them. It was the way they measured the distance between the two fire stations and they were going to go back and see if they could find that letter stating that they were a mile apart. Is that not right, Josh?
Yes, sir. And that would allow them to get the funding for the other station, for Station One, the older building. Because right now they don't. And if you drive one way, it's eight tenths of a mile. And if you drive the other way, it's a mile. So they're saying based on the one way of the eight tenths of a mile, it disqualifies it from funding. So they haven't been receiving that for some time. But as Commissioner stated, with that letter, I can get that changed because that's telling us that they would fund it and they were waiving that restriction. And that happens quite often.
And that would be a help to them?
Yes, sir. That would give them additional monies.
So we wanna help them do that.
I appreciate it, Josh. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Good update. Thank you.
Thank you, Ernie.
Next item on the agenda is the travel request consent agenda.
I don't have anything. Anything that I need to talk?
Yes, sir.
All right. Nothing to be pulled. We'll look for a motion to approve travel request consent agenda as presented.
Second.
That was pretty good, so just pick 'em.
Pick whatever you want.
We got it. Way to go. Great lines.
Did you say Crockett though? I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, Crockett.
Crockett?
Yes.
McCutcheon?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes. Should've let him know.
Didn't we thought you were going to?
Okay. All right. Emergency Business is the next item on the agenda. Okay. Item 13 is the Legislative Update.
Think we have any?
All right. And item 14, Legislators Elected Officials Guide for Comments, Announcements and Updates.
I just wanted to let you guys know that since Friday night at some point, we lost all of our cell phone service, all of our data, everything. So through the weekend, we just thought it was peaceful. So through the weekend, we just thought it was peaceful.
Big men's bliss. So big men's bliss is wonderful.
What the issue was is we were trying to switch over to the Verizon safety program so that we can have priority in emergency events. Whatever button was quick pushed, we don't know. Verizon's still working on it. Lightning was the worst. Obviously, we were on a bit on phone calls. They did figure out that if they connected to, if we connect to Wi-Fi, we get what we need and we can do a little more. But at this point, nobody on my staff is getting texts or emails on their phones. But if you do call us, that part is fixed, so we can answer. So as soon as that's fixed, I will get an email out to you and let you know a hundred percent back online. Like I said, Verizon told us yesterday, no, you don't have any problems with your device. So we were about to replace all of our devices and we found out that it is an internal issue. So as soon as we get it corrected, we will let y'all know.
So that's just calls to the, to your kind of phones. It's not tone out or anything like that?
No, it's just, just our cell phones. And Gabe does have my personal number, so if you guys do need something, you can't give me, she will give it to you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments or discussion from the department heads? Next item is County Manager's comments announcements. One thing I wanted to do, and maybe have just Ms. Jerry come up and just share. Commissioner Carlson, last meeting, had asked about some feedback about calls that you were getting. And we were having a discussion about when those calls come, can we direct them to Ms. Jerry? And she's got an update for what has been done, feedback that's been given, interaction that's gone on. So I'll just turn that.
Very social comment today about being alarmed and always complaints. I do want to remind, oh, good morning, Commissioner. Do you want to remind you that if you do get any complaints, well, Gashaway, please forward those to me so that you're not having to deal with those. And staff as well, if staff is receiving any of those phone calls. I've gotten and getting any. And so I don't know. I think a lot of it is awareness. I'm still letting the community know that I'm hearing that they're able to deal with those calls. Stemming from that, we had such a good response on Facebook, getting the link out for the road issues. And sometimes as the PIO, I'm focusing on other departments. And it's like light bulb went off. And so I have IT create the same kind of forum for our oil and gas page. And we'll be sharing that today. That's a great idea with the roads and the landfill and the oil and gas complaints that we may have. And so that's something that we're starting to utilize a little bit more. But I did just want to let you know, if you're getting any phone calls at all, please forward those to me so that we can get those off of your plate. That's one of the reasons I'm here. And so it kind of has slowed down a little bit and it's awareness. And I know as the county as a whole, we're working on a lot of that and doing more PR and things like that. So I forget about my department sometimes because I'm helping others and coming, you know, we're all coming up with some great ideas with other departments. And even Dave's like, you know, about, you know, the EAB. And it's like, oh, yeah. So I just wanted to kind of give that update and if you guys have any questions, I can answer those. EAB, the third meeting is this Thursday. I guess I should have got it there. I didn't have a problem. But going back to the litter and illegal dumping issue, Mary Garwood and Dave Seppich will actually be there giving our educational presentation this Thursday. And we're going to give them to the board on how they can get involved. One of the things they're going to be talking about is getting litter prevention back in our schools. And I remember as a kid, I'm sure you probably remember some of those things as a kid, and it just sticks with you. So we're going to try to get that back into the states here. Carl's got it. And then branch it out to Artesia and Loving. And kind of deal with the litter and illegal dumping and education. And I know our industry folks are very passionate about those things. So we're going to be presenting some options to them on how they can get involved and have the EAB start bringing some results back to the commission. And just trying to get our feet under us right now. But we've got some really great ideas for the next few meetings. Carden Forceman will be speaking at our October meeting. But I'll be giving you guys more updates as things get accomplished with the EAB. So, do you have any questions?
Thank you.
Jerry?
Couple other items. I participated in my first County Manager Organization meeting. I certainly had listened to meet that moment. So I didn't get wild or anything. But a couple of the items on their agenda. One was about census. And last meeting, Wes presented, we are pursuing the grant. And there's a lot of work and effort in there. It's really important for Eddie County and the communities within Eddie County to participate every way that we can in getting an appropriate census figure. So we'll continue with that. Had the opportunity to attend the Mayor's Energy Summit, the sponsored dinner, and then the summit on the, on the Thursday. And so it was a good opportunity to see a lot of folks, meet a lot of folks. Have folks recognize that I've made a transition from oil and gas industry to the county. So there was a lot of excitement and enthusiasm there. I appreciate that. So as a result, I had the opportunity to talk to some of the city folks. Mayor Miller and from Artesia and the mayor from Loving. And so I'd like to, I think it's part of your expectation, is but getting with those groups to continue to strengthen our network and increase our dialogue and work to align on common themes, common messages. And then eventually work for a message that doesn't matter who's speaking from within Eddie County. That message is consistent to whoever they're speaking out to, whether it's the state or the federal government or other agencies. And so there's a recognition that the unity within Eddie County and the objectives and needs within Eddie County and what we're doing to try and work that direction. So work in progress there. I think that's probably enough today. Thank you. The next item is County Commissioner's comments and announcements.
I just want to say the Mayor's Energy Summit was fantastic. I think this was one of the best ones. The dinner was so well attended. They actually got to capacity. I know there was one table that was completely empty. But it was just a great networking event. And that is the place to be every year if you want to get prepared for legislative trips or, you know, talk to our Washington DC officials. It's just a great event. And the actual day of the summit was fantastic. All the speakers were good. And Randy White was absolutely amazing. If you missed him, you really missed a great speech. And hopefully you can find it on Red Rocket or YouTube because he was fantastic. I really want to give a big shout out to the Sheriff's Department. You guys have been so busy lately. And I just want to say how much we appreciate you working these events. You were, of course, at the summit. You were at Washington Ranch with the Clay Walker concert. And just all the craziness, because you guys have had some really crazy things happening within the county. Stuff that Eddie County hasn't experienced, you know, this many murders and this large of a drug problem and things. And I just want to really say thank you because you guys are stretched thin and you seem to always get it done. So thank you. And also, how cool was it to see our sheriff on TV last night with the president? That was very, absolutely amazing to see him standing there greeting the president. So I've already sent a text to the sheriff, but that's pretty awesome. And I just want to again say thank you to all of our departments. You guys are all absolutely amazing. And thanks for always helping when I have crazy questions and crazy calls. Jerry, I won't be able to be at the EAB meeting Thursday. My kids, it's their anniversary, so they're going to Las Vegas tomorrow. And I will be keeping Mr. Bryce. So grandma duties come first for the next five days. And that's all I have.
I, like I always want to echo Susan's sentiments about the Energy Summit. I guess it started about seven years ago and been to almost all of them. And they have grown exponentially. It's become a really good roundtable for a lot of the industry, for government, and for business. So it's, I'd like to send kudos out to the, to the mayor, Mayor Janeway, for putting that together and keeping it going. And then also Kyle Marksteiner for all of his work. He, he has just, I bet he hadn't slept in two weeks before. So he's done a, done a great job about keeping that thing and getting the good speakers that are, that are good. It's a, a great networking opportunity. Also would like to apologize to President Trump for his somewhat unwelcome, being unwelcomed a little bit in the state of New Mexico. I'm sure he's listening to the meeting right now. I think he probably pays a lot of attention to, especially me here at the meeting. I'm sure he's listening. So President Trump, we apologize for anybody not being as welcoming as we would have liked. So we were sure glad he came, glad our sheriff went up there to represent Eddie County. I would like one kind of housekeeping item. Josh, we talked about a vehicle policy. I'd like to try to see if we can kind of get that vehicle policy going. Who gets a vehicle, where it goes, you know, and make sure that we're following that, that policy throughout. And other than that, I have no more, no more comments.
First and foremost, I'd like to congratulate both the Carlsbad Cavemen and the Loving Falcons on their homecoming win, wins this past weekend. Would like to, to bring out the fact that the Falcons played Mescalero and won forty-seven to nothing. So I thought that was a great way to start your homecoming. And I know that you'll probably have some comments on, on the northern side, so I didn't, I didn't step on those. I do, one of the things that we were, I was at a, at the restaurant, as a matter of fact, yesterday. And a guy asked me a question. And he said, the question was, how much produced water are we hauling down the highways every day in southeast New Mexico? And I thought that was a good question. And so I was talking with our county manager just before our meeting. And if, if that is, if we're producing a million barrels of oil a day and we have ten barrels of, ten barrels of produced water to every barrel of produced oil that we have, that's ten million barrels of produced water a day, which translates, since the, the oil field is, is twenty-four seven, that's three billion, six hundred and fifty-five million barrels of produced water in a year. And, and a truck holds a hundred and twenty barrels. That is thirty million, four hundred and sixteen thousand, six hundred and seventy trucks, loads of produced water traveling down our, our roads in southeast New Mexico in a year's time. So I just want to bring, that's a staggering number of trucks that we're having to, to run across our roads and rural roads and the highway system in a year's time. And that doesn't even count the trucks that are hauling the oil itself, the roustabouts, the supplies, and all those other things that happen in the oil field. But that is just a staggering number. I just thought that, that I wanted to highlight that. Jerry, thank you on the, working on the website for the oil and gas. I do know I had a lot of residents. And when they have these rigs that are running in and around residential areas, you know, we just need to be cognizant of the noise that's created from that. So just keep that. One of the other things, as we talked about, being the oil and gas summit, there was also an oil and gas festival out at Washington Ranch this past weekend in which they brought Clay Walker and, and some other groups in for a concert. And I was helping with the ticket sales out there. And one of the things that I saw is there is people from everywhere here. I mean, there was people from Pennsylvania, from Wisconsin, from Maryland, lots of Louisiana, East Texas, Colorado, Arizona. I did not see anybody from California. But we had, we had all those people in here. And that's going to be a census concern to us because, you know, those people still have their original state driver's license. And I'm sure that they're not registered to vote. So they're, they're a transient population. But they're still drawing down on our resources. So we need to feel, I feel like we need to find some way that we can get some count in on those. Because, you know, even if the census says that we're forty thousand, we may be a hundred thousand in our immediate area that we're having to provide services for. And if we don't get funding for the hundred thousand or someplace close to it, then it hurts all of us. It hurts all our permanent residents in, in our area. And it also hurts us as a county in having resources to fund those things that we need to fund. So that's all I have.
All right. I just have a couple quick things. Since you're going to force my hand, Artesia's doing very well since the first game. Dogs have done pretty good. Volleyball team, I don't know that they've lost a match yet. They're doing very, very well. My son's eighth grade football team, which I do want to bring out because I thought it was pretty cool. I think my number's right. It could be off by a point or two, but I think he's outscored, or he, he's a lineman. He hadn't scored yet. But his team has outscored a hundred and twenty-eight to eight at this point. So they've done pretty good. Carlsbad did score on them once. Their only team to score. We scored quite a few more though. So that was good, both times we've played so far. So sports are doing good. A lot of great kids down there. A lot of good things happening. Just tons of great stuff. It's an exciting school year so far. And I'm glad Commissioner McCutcheon, it's something I was going to bring up as well with the president's visit. I was really proud that when the governor did come to this side of the state, we didn't have any signs that said, we are not welcome here and all those things. Even though we don't necessarily agree with her policies, you still welcome them because they're the governor, they're the president. It's really disappointing that politics have come to a point where you can't even welcome the president of the United States to the great state of New Mexico and show them how great we are. We have to show them that we have ignorant people here as well, which he already knows because they're everywhere. And they tried to be prominent on a number of times. So it was disappointing, but I'm really proud of Eddie County because I think when Obama was here, when the governor comes down, when all these other folks that have opinions that might not necessarily agree with all of our opinions, they're welcomed. We're really glad to have them. We're glad to show them what we've got. So, you know, I thought that was a good example of, and, and something that Eddie County should be proud of. It's good we have manners. Manners are disappearing rapidly. But every time we see the governor, we can tell her how her policies are terrible, but we're sure glad she's here to talk about it. Otherwise, they don't come back and we don't get to have that conversation. So, so great job to, to Carlsbad welcoming the governor at the, the Energy Summit and everything else. She had a, an interesting speech, went really well. I'm sure, I'm sure everything's going to be like she said. So that's good stuff. The nineteenth, as, as we've all said, the EAB meeting is coming up. This is the first one. I won't be able to attend. My son has a football game. So we'll be there. So hopefully someone will be able to go if, if we can. It's been really good so far. Hopefully some great stuff coming out of that. And I think that's all I have, hopefully. If I miss something, I'm really sorry. But great job.
Thank you, Commissioners. The next item on the agenda is executive session. Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to go into executive session. Second.
Based on what?
Make a motion to be going to executive session in accordance with the State of New Mexico Open Meeting Zach ten dash fifteen dash H, no, ten dash fifteen dash one dash H two, which authorized the Board of County Commissioners to go to executive session to discuss limited personnel matters.
Second.
We have motion in second, please call for the vote.
Crockett?
Yes.
McCatchen?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
It's really ten twenty, so how long do you think this is gonna take?
I don't know.
Twenty minutes?
Fifteen minutes?
I would say thirty, allow thirty minutes.
We'll say thirty minutes, so we'll be back at ten fifty.
Ten fifty, okay.
Yeah, you're good, thank you.